Thank you everybody for being here. Melvin Edgewood, Chairman of the Responsible Employer Ordnance Committee. I want to thank all of you for your time. Try to pull up a copy of the agenda. Can everybody, can we get started by just having everybody introduce themselves? I'm starting in the corner here. This eleven seven zero one five.
Good afternoon. My name is Lloyd Toppin. I'm with the Department of Technical Assistance and Compliance.
Welcome. Yes, I'll just keep going.
Frank Pear would Fontaine Brothers.
Okay.
Lisa Clausen, Carpenter's Union.
Thank you.
Lindsay Hackett, Deputy CFO for the City.
Liz Wimbley, Fontaine Brothers.
Mike Langone, I'm with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union.
Jay Swan, Department of Technical Assistance and Compliance, City of Springfield.
And seven three zero one zero.
That would be me, Maureen Veer, Administrative Assistant for Facilities Management.
Okay.
Maureen.
I'm here, Fiore Grissette, Ironworkers Local Seven.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you being here. Maureen, I can't, I don't have any trouble finding the core, I mean, the agenda, if you could just announce what the next item is or the order of the agenda.
So, accept the minutes from January twenty fifth.
Make a motion to accept the minutes unless there's any addition or deletions.
Do I hear a second to that motion? Maureen, may I have a second for the motion, please?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Maureen, second item.
Discussion of the REO and to introduce Eloy Toppin.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Toppin is here.
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours. Welcome, and I believe you can just announce your title once again. We're also joined by Counselor Tim Allen, which is also a member of the committee. We welcome him. Mr. Toppin, could you spell your name for me?
Okay, it's, my first name is spelled E L O Y. My last name is Toppin, T O P P I N, and my first name is pronounced Alloy. Alloy Toppin.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, having the floor, I was asked to just give it some brief information about my background in the compliance area. I've worked chiefly with construction projects, monitoring the City of Hartford's affirmative action requirements and goals, which are similar to the REO. However, the, what we also included was minority in business, minority in business, minority women in business enterprise participation, which was a requirement. So each project would have fifty percent of the construction costs assigned or contracted to MWBEs. I worked with the major development projects. That was what I was charged to do in the central business area. So, an example, one of the major projects in the downtown Hartford was the baseball field. I also worked with the school building committee projects. I was on a selection committee selecting architectural firms, construction managers, and oversaw the compliance manager of each school project. And I also performed audits and drafted reports on the status of compliance and outcomes for those. I monitored post-construction requirements and community benefits agreements. So, our larger projects would include a community benefit component, and it also had post-construction jobs as a requirement in retail, or if it was maintenance, whatever jobs that the project created or developed as a result of the construction or just being in existence. That was, those are kind of things that we required that be part of what we wanted to monitor and what we wanted to see to benefit the residents. Also, in post-construction agreements, we would have annual scholarships or annual payments to nonprofit agencies. We also had a tax abatement component. With our tax abatement projects, we would have requirements, the, again, the city affirmative action requirements and goals, and also have an MWBE part of it. This, who would get a tax abatement would also not only public housing construction, but also private large-scale apartment developments that are being rehabilitated. We also had requirements on tax fixing agreements, and again, like the Hartford Insurance Group, they built a computer center that handled all their investments, which was, which was the backup for another center located in the Midwest. That was something that I monitored and had our requirements as part of that. We also had a living wage ordinance, which is administered, which is the program that I administered. The living wage ordinance would come into effect if there were no Davis Baker requirements or prevailing wage requirements. We would then default to the ordinance. And under that, I was responsible determining the hourly wage annually in conjunction with the family healthcare costs, and I conducted payroll records, reviews of all the contractors or business service contracts that came under living wage. I was the Title VI Coordinator for the city. City, so I worked closely with the Department of Transportation and the Greater Hartford Transit. I also was the coordinator for the HUD Section Three program. So I worked closely with the Grants Management Office, oversaw projects that had Section Three provisions. And then I was appointed Chair of the Hartford Fires Task Force, which we were able to, out of that, we developed a database just to serve city residents. Local employers placed their job listings in the database. Local employees could reach, could search for city residents, and residents submitted their job search information or skills, and that was chiefly just for residents. No one else could, no, anybody outside of the city could not participate in that. And one of the things that I was really proud of is I developed a loan program for small businesses that held a contract on city projects. So the loan can be, you know, could be used for materials and supply purchases or meet payrolls, and the loan is backed by the payment due to the small contractor. And the loan generally could be approved within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, had nothing to do with assets putting in a long extensive, you know, loan, loan application. It was just based on the fact that they were on a contract and they were owed money by the general contractor. So to conclude, I believe contract compliance activities should affect change, which is my passion. I enjoy improving lives of individuals through meaningful jobs or working with small businesses by assisting them in leveling the playing field and helping them secure bonding loans or learning estimating to better participate in municipal projects. That's it.
Well, you certainly, your resume is quite impressive, and I welcome you. I'm actually, I see Fiore's hand, I'm gonna bow to him, but I, I certainly I guess, I'm, after Fiore, I guess, just as a heads up, I'd be interested to hear what, you know, you've been, how long, well, I assume you've been here for at least a little bit of time. This would be your first REO meeting, but I would love to hear what your thoughts of what Springfield has in place. I don't think it's, it doesn't sound like where is anywhere near as comprehensive as what you have came from in Hartford or in Connecticut. So, if you are, you want to start with the questionings?
Yeah, Melvin, so I, I would be more than patient to defer. I just put my hand up just to, so till somebody acknowledges it, but if you want to continue, that's fine, but basically, I did not realize that Eloy, Eloy, correct? Am I saying it correct? Eloy?
No, Alloy.
Alloy, I'm, okay, I, Alloy, had, actually is working for the city now, so welcome to the City of Springfield and good luck in your new position. I mean, just to kind of check in what Melvin said, so I, I don't know how long you have been either, and I, again, looking at this, I did not realize, I'm with the Ironworkers Union, been on the board forever, along with Melvin myself, is probably the two longest standing, but have you had a chance to look over, you know, how, you know, the REO itself, are you, are you comfortable with it? You know, we're, in other words, we're always looking for improvements, and anytime we can make them, as well as, you know, whether it's the monitoring, whether it's paperwork, whether it's the, what the contract has to do to show, you know, that he's, you know, anything and everything. So, you know, if and when you get a chance to look stuff over, we'd of course be more than open to feedback as to what we can do to get more women, minorities, veterans, and residents, or, you know, any, any input would be fantastic. So I just want to welcome you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll cut it short.
Well, I have to concur. I didn't know you're hiring either. I think I had heard rumblings that they were hiring someone, but it wasn't no official announcement notification, so I apologize for not knowing Tim. I can't speak, maybe Tim knew it was coming. Certainly, Lindsay, you probably know because she signs off on our checks and our money. So, and that's, I'm saying that in a positive way, but we do welcome you, and I am curious, though, if you've had a chance, obviously, you knew what you were applying for. From the description of your resume, it sounds like you, you certainly come well qualified, and I'm eager to hear your critique, very, very short critique of what we have, and maybe an appropriate, maybe to not today, but in an appropriate time, I'd like to have a meeting, just a personal meeting with you, but also just to have an opportunity for the committee to hear some of your thoughts, ideals, and how to make things better. And before all involved, whether that be the contractors, and certainly the goal of the city council is, which was established as ordinance, which is to help benefit residents and taxpayers of the city. Does anybody else have any questions? Or should, or Tim, did you want to ask him any question?
Yeah, I, I do. I'd also like to welcome you. Did you say Alloy is your first name?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Great, and I'm on the city council with Melvin. He and I have both been on, we're in our thirteenth year, and we went on at the same time, and he's been the biggest champion of the REO, and I've been trying to file, he and Fiore have been on the longest. I've been on maybe six years or so. Just wondering, what position exactly is your new position, Alloy?
For the title is Senior Compliance Project Manager.
Okay. That's good. That's great. And Shay, can you comment on how Alloy is positioned, you know, or is he reporting to you, or is it another organization, or how is all that working?
So yes, Alloy reports to me. We're Department of Two right now. We're actually ramping up. We have other staffers who are working in ARPA right now because of how large it is and how much needs to be done in that department. And so, once ARPA actually starts to wind down, we have a couple staffers that will be coming back over to DTAC as we grow out our small business development part. Alloy comes with requisite competencies for compliance and small business development. So I think we've done very well. Lindsay and I have talked about this a few times, how much experience and information he brings to the table with him, and how, what we're trying to do, how he fits so well with it, and so, no, we're more than happy to have Alloy come on right now, especially in a time where it's hard to get employees in the door, let alone really good employees with a lot of experience in a multitude of fields that we actually need for this department. So we're, we're very happy.
Great, and so you have, you continue to have, you Shay, you continue to have ARPA responsibilities as well as compliance responsibilities.
Correct.
Okay, and is there, is there a sharing of resources across that line between people who are, like, Alloy is hired on the compliance side, but do you envision people on one side helping on the other side as well, or is it?
Correct. We're, we're pulling where needed right now as we build out the model. So yes, to answer your question, yes.
Okay, one last question on that. Matt Ferry, I believe he got hired. Where is he in your organization as well?
He's working in ARPA compliance as well.
Okay.
So yes, he's, he's full-time ARPA right now. Yeah, so as we had Alloy come on for compliance and DTAC, Matt Ferry has come on for compliance in ARPA.
Excellent. Great, thanks. Those are my questions for now, Melvin. Thank you.
Lindsay, I assume you already met Alloy and welcomed him as well. Did you have any comment before?
No, actually, you know, like Trey said, we were thrilled to get him on board. Our interview with Alloy was, you know, after formalities, was really just kind of like talking about the REO and what he did in Hartford, and he was talking to us and asking us a bunch of questions about our, you know, our REO. So Alloy brings a lot to the table, and we're excited, you know, to introduce him to you all and just kind of get him going and what he loves to do, so.
Well, thank you, Lindsay. And to our guests, any of you have Liz or anybody would like to address our newest team member, Alloy, please feel free to speak up.
We'd just like to welcome him, obviously.
Yeah.
Feel free to, anytime you would like to go to the job site in, for DeBerry, by all means, reach out to myself or Liz, and we'll be happy to escort you and provide the proper personal protection that you'll need to go on a site.
We actually, we had the pleasure of having Alloy at one of the check-ins that we were doing with the subcontractors. So it was wonderful to have him come in and see the process from, from our side and get to talk to him a little bit. So, welcome, Alloy.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Alloy.
I was just gonna say that I do like this process, having this committee. It's nothing that I've worked with in the past, and I think it's a good process where it involves council and other members on, in the city to know exactly what's going on with projects and also assist the department in the process and of compliance. And again, there's probably a lot of things that can be done, and I'm hoping, and so far Shay and I have talked a lot about expanding what's being done, and I think there can be a lot of things done for the city and local businesses.
Actually, I, I didn't, I was trying to take notes. I couldn't get you, is, I mean, I didn't go to the right high school to be able to take great notes, I guess, but I did, I did get excited at hearing some of the things, and I had remembered probably ten, twelve, thirteen years ago, back around the time that we were starting this. I believe the then mayor of Hartford was much more, was, I'm not saying more, but he was very progressive about the ideal of what we're doing now down there. So I'm not surprised you came from a community that was certainly much more further along than we are, but that being said, I will reach out, send you a text after the, you know, I assume I can contact you through Shay. I don't want to interrupt the chain of command now that I recognize where his status is and yours, but Alloy, I do welcome you. Look forward to, you know, sitting across from the table and getting you a chance to see how strangely different I am personally. And Shay and most of the people on the committee have already kind of know who my style is like, but I do welcome you sincerely, and I wish you much success, and I'm eager to pick your brain for your ideals. That being said, we have a couple people from the construction trades. They are busy people and like to not waste their time either. Maureen, is the, I assume the next item that we would probably be discussing would be an update on D-Berry?
Well, that's the third one. The second one is the one with Lindsay to discuss the new project closeout report. So if you want to skip that and go to the review, you can.
Which one would be, well, would I guess, are you guys on any timeframes that I would need a courtesy of getting you off quicker?
I'll be quick with mine. We don't have anything to review, but I can just give you a status.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, so what we decided, we kind of have bounced this back and forth between me, Alloy, and Shay, and Alloy did develop a closeout report, but what it's going to be actually is a report from Shay and DTAC to the committee. So the closeout report will be, have all the information, you know, the final numbers of the project, all the information pertinent to the project, and it will then be reported out to the committee kind of as a final, you know, summary and overview of the project. So we'll do it that way. And then you can use that report to report out however you would want, Melvin. And so, so we're developing it now. We're going back and forth, kind of determining what's the best information to have on it, what we should leave out. And then once we have, you know, a final draft, we'll come back to the committee and review with everybody.
So it would be appropriate for any members of the committee who have suggestions as to what you might consider to include. They might want to get that information to you as soon as possible.
Yeah, if you have information you want us, that you know you want to be included, you can send it to us. Otherwise, you can wait until we present it to you, and then we can, you know, discuss any changes that you have.
Fiore, Tim, you guys got that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Lindsay. Appreciate that. Item number three. Liz, I assume you're going to carry us on just the water for us now, right?
You ready to trust me to ram the ship here?
Always happy to listen to your reports.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, everybody. So I'll just gonna, the numbers that I'll share, which will be in the packet, they're actually for March. We're working on completing the April report, so definitely we'll be sharing that as soon as we have that complete. But as of the end of March, we were on track on all but one category, which is residents, and so the numbers, which I'll also put on the, in the chat in case that's easier. For folks of color, we were at thirty percent. For women, we were at seven point two percent. Veterans, we were at six point nine percent, and for residents, we were at twenty-four, twenty-four percent. So, you know, that has been a major point of discussion when we've had conversations with subcontractors as they're coming on to get their, you know, get an idea of, you know, what their strategy is in terms of making sure that we have residents on on the project. And of all the categories, that has been the one that most folks have shared with us that is, you know, is a challenge. So to that end, we have had in, you know, subcontractor, certainly who's, you know, not meeting the goals, we've, you know, reached out to them and, you know, had them share with us their plan, but also we have, you know, kind of pulled, you know, between Shay, Frank, myself, and others to gather all, you know, additional outreach, which includes, you know, working with community works. We've had a couple folks who've been referred to us from community works, who we've actually put forward trust subcontractors. You know, we've connected with a couple folks over at Stick. We have also, you know, done some continued outreach to Putnam, as well as to the neighborhood councils, and we have a flyer that's kind of ready to go out to local churches and other organizations. Again, as an additional touch point to try and be that resource to folks to make sure that we're helping them achieve the goals. We have seen some of the, some of the, we did have two contractors in particular that we were, you know, just in constant contact of, just to make sure that they did get on the board for some of the goals, and we have seen some some movement there. So, you know, we expected that. For one of them, you know, they're still kind of ramping up slowly, so, and we've seen, we saw an improvement actually from February to March. So we're expecting to see some of, you know, some of that movement as well. So I'll pause there and Shay, Frank, anything that I've neglected to?
No, you've, you've touched on just about everything. Yeah, we've had probably about two or three contractors that we've had follow-up meetings with because of their numbers and more importantly, their residency numbers that just have been not good. So we're staying with them. They've been amenable to the corrective actions and helping with, us helping them with their labor force. And so we're going to see in the next month or so how they do before we circle back, but we've seen some movement as far as the goals are concerned with respects to minorities and residents for one of them, and so we're just looking to get traction with the other one. And if they move forward and we're fine, and that's great. If not, we'll just have to look for some other measures going forward.
Without naming people individually, nevermind, I'll just, I'll stop there, but I'll just leave that statement out there. Fiore, would you like to say something?
Yeah, so I think at the last project, there was one contractor that was, really had some very poor numbers, and to be honest, I'm not even sure what type of effort he made on it. So I guess I was, you know, Melvin just said, without naming the contractor, I mean, we've got reports in front of us. We can see that some of these contractors are, you know, their numbers are low in one category, two categories, three, all four. So the question is, can we name where it of, should, or is it, is it something that we should know who, you know, again, just what you said, that we're, we had these meetings, here's who we had a meeting with, and that way we can keep track of, once they had the meeting, we get to know or see the numbers later. And again, I'm just throwing it out there because we've never really had this type of conversation as to where, you know, we have corrective actions. Who, who did you have a conversation with? And, and again, we can hope and pray, but does it actually work at the end is going to be the question. And I'll chime in about the report in a minute in case somebody else wants to add or comment on, you know, before I get any further.
I guess that is TBD, right? Like, we've had situations in the past project, Brightwood Lincoln, where we've had corrective action meetings, and they've done what they've needed to do, their due diligence, and brought their numbers up, and we're fine. We've had a couple with one or two contractors that didn't. And that's, that would happen at that project. And so one of the underperformers on that project is another underperformer on this project. And we've had a corrective action meeting with them, and same, same still, and I think we both know who that contractor is. And so there's another contractor that's not doing too well, that's having movement and trying to do better and making progress. And so we'll see how that goes forward. And so we monitor from month to month, and we stay on top of them as far as them meeting their goals. However, the same contractor from the last build did the same thing on this build, and that's what we're going to try to do to try to figure that out going forward because we can't keep having that.
May I ask, is inappropriate, at this point, ask, who is our attorney? Who represents or gives us legal advice for the REO? Right, go ahead, Lindsay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Melvin, I know that's something you've requested, and I have requested it through the law department. If we have any specific questions, I would suggest probably starting with Kathy Breck and reaching out to her via email. If she can't help us, she could point us to somebody who would, but as far as somebody who's able to sit in on all the REO meetings and provide kind of guidance on the spot, I haven't heard back from anybody in the law department about providing that yet, or being able to provide it yet.
Okay, well, the thing is, is as you can, you got to hit or the tone that I measured on what I say, and I'm concerned about what we say when we call out individuals, even in the course of what I think is legal in our scope, because there is no legal advisor in the room for us. And, but to the point of, you know, what Shay just said, repeated non-performer. You know, it's great to hear. I mean, I don't expect perfection from anybody, so when I have an entity that isn't quite up to snuff, this receptive to counsel and counseling, that's, you know, that's acceptable to me. I mean, it's not perfection, but it's, it's, it's welcome, knows that they are. At least one of them who was underperforming is pointing in a better direction, listening to the councils being advised. I'm more concerned about the non-performer first job, next job, been hired. And the legalities, how do we address that? I see somebody's hand up and I'm going to just shut up at this point and allow somebody else to speak. Fiore, if you don't mind, gentleman in the corner, which is, I believe, Mike Langone?
I want to speak, but I don't know how to put my hand up. So I'll speak now that you called on me, but
Actually.
Paul Gore with the Electrician Junior had his hand up before me.
Okay, I'm sorry. But either one of, if whatever one, whatever order, just, you know, I would not.
Just kind of want to, you know, this current project has a zero and a zero. I've been around, Paul's probably been around longer than me, but I've been working on with this REO committee and on this REO since we adopted it. We started it back, like you said, I think about fifteen years ago. And the and the main reason union or non-union was to put local people to work. And you have a zero across the board again with a plumbing contractor from Cape Cod and a heating contractor from the Vermont border who don't have any Springfield residents and never have in the last fifteen years on their payroll, but yet they continue to work in the city of Springfield. And I don't understand how we can continue to be doing this fifteen years later. And what is the compliance and how can we fix it? I just, it's just, these people don't have any, any local, they don't have Springfield people working for them. So they're not going to put them at this school or any other project you have in the city. But yet they keep winning the bids and keep working in the city. It's just frustrating. It's all zeros. Look at it.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Plumbing and heating and resessi, they're all zeros.
Mr. Gore, please, your comments.
Hey, Paul Gore with the Electrician Junior. Like Mike said, we were the ones that pushed for this REO to try to bring more middle-class jobs in the Springfield. That was the whole premise of this. We want to make sure that it's upheld. And for a long time, it's like the waiver committee is what it was called because it was always a waiver. And, you know, I'm glad that there's people that are that care about it. And the new guy sounds like he's got a good background on it. But I want to know. So I'm looking at the electrical on the new place here. I want to know if you guys actually do your own checking as to what they're they're submitting because I got certified payrolls. And what that contractor submitted wasn't actual. It wasn't true. As far as what residents were, he put thirty two hours in there just out of the blue. And I'm looking at the payrolls for the month. And there wasn't anybody on there from Springfield. No, he might think West Springfield is Springfield, but it isn't. Not as far as I'm concerned, that's not the same city. So do you guys delve into this and actually dig it up yourself and make sure that they are veterans like they say they are, minorities like they say they are? And residents that like they say they are because that's if they're going to make things up and just throw it in there and they think that's going to pacify people, I hope it doesn't.
Che, can you respond to that, please?
Yes, we definitely check the certified payrolls. And we verify what they say on the payrolls as truth under the pains and penalties of perjury. Going further than that, as far as going to people's residences or things of that nature, no, we don't do that, but we verify all the certified payrolls, yes.
Which is Mr. Gore's comments and complaint or observation is legitimate. It's, I mean, as he says, I've been on this doing this as long as they established it and it's been the consistent concern. I mean, what happens when we, well, I
Both the concerns are legitimate. We have had conversations about these contractors without mentioning them by name on this very committee more than once. So and we're doing our best as far as following up with them and holding their feet to the fire. And Fontaine can attest to that as well. However, Mr. Langone is right as far as the zeros and continuing to get work. And that's something that we need to stop.
So I guess what I'm asking is, did you find those thirty two hours that that were submitted under his? He's got a little sheet here that he has that had thirty two extra hours of residents on it that weren't actual.
No, and I will look at that as soon as I get off this call, yes.
In in the order, I missed, Mr. Gore, you said? Okay, I don't know if Tim or Fiore spoke first, but I'm going to bow to, I'm allowed, Tim, if you could speak next, please. You're on mute, counselor.
Yeah, sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Listening to the comments of Mr. Gore and a couple of other comments. How do we end up, what's, I don't understand how if we're keeping track of people who are not performing, how do they get the next job? Is that a flaw in the selection process and the bid process? Or is it, is it because we don't connect the dots on past performance to future performance? You know, I don't know, we need to have a big discussion on it now, but it, those are the those are the questions that cross my mind because
Yeah, and that goes beyond us to the lowest qualified bidder in the bidding process. So we, we don't deal with the bidding process and who wins the bid. We deal with who is on the project. So as far as the bidding process is concerned and who wins the bid, that is not part of our content area.
It's not, it might not be part of yours, Che, and I see that. And that's why I asked the question the way I did because I don't understand. But there still needs to be some communication of the performance of vendors to the bidding process. It says lowest qualified. Maybe they're not, I don't know what makes them qualified, but maybe, maybe, you know.
And and I agree. And the qualifications as far as the state guidelines go aren't the qualifications as far as the city ordinance goes. And then you have an issue there as far as that's concerned. So the REO is a city ordinance and not a state law. And so state law supersedes our city ordinance.
Okay. So so are you implying that that state law requires the lowest bidder to get the thing, get the contract?
So what what I'm saying is for them to be deemed noncompliant, they have to be deemed noncompliant through the state as far as the project is concerned. We can deem them noncompliant through the city. But the state has to deem them noncompliant for them to start being able to be taken off projects.
So then, if that's the case, and that's, you know, I I'm learning that from you now. Not, I've not known that before. Then how do we get? If we have a nonperforming sub, as was just alluded to in this meeting, how do we get the information of their nonperformance to the state process?
I I guess the state would have to add a mechanism as far as compliance. I I I really would like to know myself because that's something that we need more teeth in to be able to move them off of projects going forward. The city can deem them noncompliant and we have to find a way to figure that out. And that's one of the things I've intimated in meetings in the past as far as noncompliant subcontractors still winning municipal bids and being the qualified bidder by the end being not compliant on a previous or previous contracts.
Well, thank you for the answer and the question as you did. Mr. Chair, I'm done on this for myself for now. Maybe somebody has something better to say than me. But this is, to me, is a huge action item going forward.
Well, actually, I was going to ask Aloy because of his experience in Connecticut. And if not, Aloy, maybe either Fiore or one of the other representatives in the union could speak on that particular part about what state process for determining contractors as being not compliant.
Um.
Or maybe even
I can also speak on that and I I can go after Aloy. But I can also speak on that because this had a lot to do with the reason why we changed it from looking at the individual some subs' performances to looking at the aggregate numbers of the general contractor. And that is because, as Che said, you know, our ordinance does not supersede MGL. And there's very strict guidelines as to the lowest qualified bidder. And he's right. We just can't say that this bidder is unqualified. It has to go through the state in order for them to get eliminated from the bidding process. And because we as a committee have so little say in that, that's why we thought it would be better to look at the project and the success of the project overall from the general contractors level. I think that if we want to look at specific subbidders and subcontractors, we can develop a process for that. And we did talk a long, long time ago about formally reporting some of our findings to procurement. So they could take that into consideration and maybe even submit something to the state about a specific contractor, but we never kind of made a move on that. So if there's anything up, our hands are kind of tied on that. And I think that maybe if we get Hope back here, having worked in procurement now for as long as she has. I know Lauren's out, but maybe if we get her back to an REO meeting, she can explain it better. Because that's something that Theo explained to us a lot. And we don't have a lot of teeth there, unfortunately.
And just to piggyback off that, Mr. Langone and Mr. Gore, it's not for a lack of trying. And everybody who's been a part of the process, Liz, Frank, they've tried very hard as well. So it's not for lack of trying because we're on subcontractors all the time. And the ones that you've named in particular, trust me.
What is, I guess, before Can I, can I stop everybody real quick? Because I really have, I got to ask, Frank, are you still on?
Yep.
Yeah, question. So I'm under the impression that, first off, are they talking about DCAM certification? Because that's the only decertification that I know of that state has. As far as I know, a city-owned controlled project has the right to deem a contract that irresponsible and can reject that bid based on their their determination of that contract. I don't believe they have to go through the state unless it's a DCAM project and these are not. So am I correct at that or wrong at that? Because I've been working with my lawyer for twenty five years and he's always said from day one, the city can reject the bid based on the word responsible, irresponsible. You change that they're responsible, they can reject that bit. So is that correct, what they're giving people information? Because you know, or I think we should try to clarify for that before we go any further. Because I think we're, I just don't think we all know. That's the problem. So you do, you deal with this a lot longer. What's your interpretation of it? What have you heard? Because I heard just the opposite. The city can control the
So I am not a, I'm a guy that puts together buildings. Okay, let's let's start there. Been doing this for thirty eight years. And I think part of the problem is the cart before the horse. The first process is to get these subcontractors eligible to bid. They have to have a DCAM certification that they are eligible to bid. That's step one. So they, at that point, they haven't proceeded to do the work of the REO. So it's not until you get into the project
Right.
that you realize that, oh, these people aren't toeing a line. So I don't know how you know, we're having an open discussion. I don't know how you go around that. You know, you might hire them and they're there's no issue. But you hire them because they're eligible. They have a DCAM certification that they're eligible. You get halfway through the project and they're they're having hard times meeting the numbers. I will tell you that Fontaine, as Che said, when we find a subcontractor is is lagging, we call them to the table. We, you know, we hold them accountable. We ask for an action plan. We in some, in in a lot of instances, they come through and they 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 hire the people they're need, they need to hire. Sometimes there's just not those people available. I can, I can tell you, we ran it, we had an issue. We were trying to get to Mike's point, the plumber. We had some options. A lot of those options didn't work, you know, and it wasn't due to lack of effort. I can tell you that. And I don't want to make it into a union, non-union issue. And I know both you guys are representing unions. The people you're talking about are non-union. So let's, please, let's not get into that because that's not what this discussion is about. This discussion is about putting people of Springfield to work that are residents. So, Fiore, I don't know if I answered your question.
No, I I think I stand corrected then. So you clarified a few. So originally, you have to be DCAM certified. And those who may not know, I think DCAM is decertified literally one contractor in their whole existence, maybe two. It's less than five. It's it's very few, but I might be standing corrected. I'm actually going down to Boston and I'm going to ask our lawyer that direct question and get his interpretation. I'm actually, I'm sending me an email so that we maybe have something to help us move forward. But this, I think, needs to be a separate meeting only because this got brought up at UMass. We have to start coming up with a list of contractors that worked on every project at some point. And then we can just go back and say, out of ten jobs, the XYZ did good, bad. Maybe we should, you know, have some kind of a chart down the road. Not saying tomorrow, everybody's got enough under play. But I think that's something to consider that we can look at these contractors because this has been a law for fifteen years. We have statistics. We never did it before. Now that we've got this new system in place and everybody likes it, let's try to maybe consider that as we go forward. That way we can spit it out instantly how these contractors are doing historically.
Aloy, would you like to jump in? Yes, please.
Yes, I I would like to think that we've been working closely with the solicitor's office of what's legal and what's not. There is generally a difference between what a municipality can do with their funds and and then what they can't do with state funds. But working closely with the solicitor and I always feel that what's in an agreement can really dictate something. I was working on one project and we we had in the language, a penalty if they didn't meet the MWB component, and we ended up getting a penalty of forty nine thousand dollars. Now, when you, when we're talking about labor, then there are a lot of laws that dictate that. And 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 so you, you know, that's where you have good faith effort and, you know, going through all of that process and understand and making sure that they're doing all they're supposed to do. But one of the things that I'd like to, and I was working on it closely, is to find ways to penalize companies that that don't meet their numbers. And one of the things that I, we looked at was maybe, again, working with the solicitor's office is whatever percentage you're supposed to meet. Or if they're supposed to, if whatever labor hours are there, those labor hours could be paid by the contractor. So there's a lot of things we could look at. But again, working closely with the legal office and seeing what can be done, but putting emphasis on that. But again, I I do agree. I always feel that what's in an agreement is what we can hold people to. And that's why I always liked benefit agreements because they would, the contractor would sign off to that. And if they agree to it, it has maybe have anything to do with the ordinance specifically, but they agree that they will do this if this doesn't happen. And and so again, that's something to look at.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I think we've had a pretty hearty conversation. I apologize to Mr. Gore and to our friends in labor. Because they're, the things that they've brought up, they've been, they've been, you know, championists as long as me and Fiore have been involved with this. And I know it must be frustrating to be this long into it, we're a decade long into it and still kind of circling the same train on the same one issue. Lindsay, you've 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 got the gist of what's going on. If it would be convenient for you or either Che, either one of you to try to have a conversation with Ms. Breck about this as well. Just keep us in, you know, in the loop or keep her in the loop of what's going on. I mean, I I always, yeah.
Yeah, because our DCA can say noncompliant for the city ordinance in the REO. But what does that mean for DCAM that doesn't even have our standards as part of theirs?
Well, the thing is, is what, the thing that that one of the notes that I took from was the and I'll just state it as an accusation that the numbers weren't correct and that they were falsified.
Oh, we're definitely going to look into that, yes.
I mean
That's separate and apart, but yeah.
You you made reference to, you know, the perjury laws, rules, you know, when you sign a legal document on the rules of perjury. That should, at least, if if it's documented and substantiated, I would think on a state level, DCAM would, could, I mean, is DCAM strictly about, you know, do you have the competency to do the, perform the job safely in the workplace? Or does the, you know, is there a standard of credibility that if you can lie on a document, it would disqualify you? And if the company is doing that, and they're a problem company, then I I don't know. I just, I, but I can sense and appreciate this. I, I don't know, I just, I, but I can sense and appreciate this high degree of frustration. We're all trying to do something that's productive. And so if, if, but I, we're, we're coming up on an hour. And I, I'd never want to try to take this power on an hour, because all of you people actually work for a living. I get there, I get the pleasure and honor just talking a lot. And, you know, so I'm going to go bin my wife's here in a few minutes. But is there anything else, or Lisa, or anybody else, any of our guests would like to, you know, at this point. Have something to interject or to suggest or share with us before I kind of like wrap things up.
Can I just say something real quick?
Of course, please.
We, we, we all want the same thing here, and if we can all figure out a way collectively. To come up with a mechanism or mechanisms to figure this out, we're, we are all ears.
Well, I, I think that's, I mean, there's no, there's no debate about that, and what I suggest is, is if. You know, as you, as you have your private conversations, as you just talk to your experts, your lawyers, what have you, please bring back thoughts and ideals, because. We know what the problem is, how do we solve it? Fiore, do you?
Yeah, I, no, but I got something really important, because I want to caution this when we leave this meeting today. And how we say things, as you, you know, if you heard me earlier say, it's all about documenting and having the criteria right in front of you. Front of us, I want to caution us, because when we started this conversation, Liz was the first to point out that we do have. We far exceeded minorities, we have, we're right there with women, we're right there with veterans, and we are a little lacking on. So even if those numbers were all perfect, I want to be clear that the point is, are we happy, like, in other words. Nine contractors out of twelve would definitely have minorities, four, three, and four out of women, veterans, and Springfield residents. So I'm, I'm not, these numbers could almost be doubled if women, if the other eight attempt to do something on them. I got eight zeros in women, so if those other eight at least try, not, I'm not, that's a bad word, at least try. If they were, that's a bad word too, I see what I'm trying to say. We could get that number up considerably. I'm not happy with seven percent, I like to see it twenty percent, and we can do that, but I, I want to be clear that. No matter what, if the contractors, we can't go around saying we're going to bar somebody, we're going to fine somebody, because at the end of the day. It's not an individual contractor, it's the total hours for, we changed that, it was individual. You had, we had the option to go after that one individual contractor. Now we can't, as an individual, maybe I'm wrong. But it's more so we can still do something about him. My point is, we can't. We, we can't aggressively go after the guy, because if the numbers are still being met at the bottom, there's nothing wrong. That kept, 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 said to me. As we were changing the REO, it's not a bad thing. So, you know, we got the numbers good, so I want to be clear about that. Just, we want to be careful how we say this with some of the contractors that are underperforming or not performing, you know?
But if, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think. When we're talking about individual contractors, and I've been very careful not about, you know, calling them out by name specifically. But there's nothing that I don't think that we do as a group that precludes us from being able to say to ABC. Sheet Rock Company, you as working under Fontaine are not doing well enough. And obviously Fontaine is giving you counsel and advice, but. And maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any, you know. Regardless of the, the general numbers, you, you're absolutely right, Fiore, if the other, if each company had at least some percentage where there's zeros across the board. The total numbers would be better, and, you know, as we say that we're, you know, we're, these numbers are. I don't want to say satisfactory, or we're doing well, I mean, nobody is saying these are the numbers that we are all consistently happy about across the board. What we're saying is, I think, you know, and I don't have to speak for anybody, but I don't think anybody. You know, if, if the goal is thirty percent and we can get to forty, why wouldn't we want to? And if we could double the number of women that we got into these fields, you know, why wouldn't we want to do that? I'm sure the plumbers and the electricians and all the other unions would like to have their benches empty at all times and have a high degree of diversity. And people that are local spending money in, you know, in local businesses as well, so it's to all of our benefit. I mean, we're a state that's going to pay prevailing wage regardless whether you're union or non-union. We need our people working, when they're working, we eliminate the excuse for bad behavior, aside from the effects of eviction, of course, but.
And we need the contractors that, even if they don't make the goal, they need to try and try as hard as possible, and that's really the point.
And I guess then it's just been a question of what's the definition of trying, and, you know. My wife's, you know, some of, you know, we as men, we know our aim is off sometimes, but we try. At least according to our wives, we need to try harder. Bad joke, I guess.
Lisa, Lisa has something to say.
Lisa, would you like to close this out, Lisa, please?
Sure, I guess I, I just wanted to echo what Shay said, that, you know, we. I, I do appreciate the value of these meetings, because I think we are, all are in it for similar goals. And it's a really important place that can. You know, raise issues like Mike did, where there are different problems and figure out collectively then, how, how do we tackle this? How do we, you know, tackle getting responsible contractors hired who are going to work towards these goals? And, and if they're not, what are we doing about it? And so I just want to, you know, say I just appreciate having the space in which all of us to be able to get on. And have transparency on looking at the numbers and, and figure out how we can, what, what we're doing well on and how we can strengthen. What's been done.
Well, if, if nobody else has anything, I'd just like to say thank you. I sincerely appreciate all of your time. When I come into these meetings and I leave, I always leave smarter than I came in, so to all of you. Regardless of your title, thank you, I appreciate you very much, and I look forward to your continued support and endeavors to make things better. Motion to adjourn. Lindsay, Fiore, Tim.
Yeah, motion to adjourn, sorry, I was trying to get my thing out, I was.
Che and Aloy, I'll reach out very shortly, because, or, or within the next couple of days, I know you guys. Everybody in the city is overworked, everybody's, you know, it's, it's a good thing when we're overworked, because you have too much money to spend. And you don't have, and you got too many people trying to do too many jobs. So I'm going to just say thank you, everybody, for their time, and I think Tim is probably the one who's enjoying the meeting the best. Because his background is better than all of ours.
The last day of finals was yesterday, now I just got it correct.
Thank you, guys, and ladies as well, all of you, be safe, be well, and may God bless you all, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, see you.